I know. And she said, well, why don't you run? Is there anybody more qualified than you? And I said, no, there isn't. She goes, well, I think you should run. So with her support, I decided to run and give my experience in government and on the council to the ninth district. And I hope they see that I can get the ground running on January 1st. And that's why I decided to run to keep Lexington a great place to live and grow. And I got a granddaughter that just turned six months old and I want to keep it for.
Thank you so much. Willie, well, the next question, we'll start with you. Why are you the best candidate for this position?
Well, as I said, I got experience and served on the council previously for nine years. I worked in the mayor's office as the council liaison. I was in charge of the administrative review process where everything went through to get on the dockets and the programs from resolutions to ordinances. So I know the inner workings of the government as well as anybody. So I think I can, like I say, I can hit the ground running on January 1st. And then these times today, we need somebody that can do that. Yeah, that's why I'm running.
Great. Thank you so much. Whitney, same question to you. Why are you the best candidate for this position? 90 seconds.
So I feel like that I'm the best candidate for this position because I offer a fresh perspective and that will be the necessary vehicle for change in our community. I'm first and foremost a mother and I'm a concerned citizen, just like most of you. I always knew I wanted to run for city council and decided it was time for me to step up and be the voice for those who want to be involved but don't know how. I want to foster government transparency and public engagement. I want to serve my community and most importantly, I want to be a part of the conversations that will affect changes for generations to come. We can't make the necessary changes in our community if we don't elect individuals with a fresh outlook on how our city should be run.
All right. Great. Thank you so much. So now that we've gotten a chance to get to know you all a little bit better, we're going to go ahead and move into some questions that were submitted to us by community members. So some of these came from your all's districts. Some of them came from other folks that wanted us to ask this to as many candidates as possible. So this is an assortment of those questions that we received. We are going to be reading, or I guess I'm going to be reading them to you exactly as they were submitted. So there's no editing or anything with these questions. So just wanted to make sure that you all knew that. Whitney, you will have the first question. What specific housing policies would you propose to address our housing shortage here in Lexington? You have 90 seconds.
Yeah, so we are definitely plagued with a lack of affordable housing. And I feel like it's our responsibility to ensure everyone has the opportunity to find a home that meets all of their needs. First, I feel like we need to protect and preserve the current inventory of affordable housing. And we also must protect the underserved areas from gentrification and resident displacement. I feel like we should incentivize developers to build housing to accommodate a variety of income levels and concentrate affordable building efforts in our opportunity zones and under undeveloped and vacant lots. We must continue to contribute to the Affordable Housing Fund and we need to continually reevaluate zoning regulations like the recent vote to change the Florida area ratio within the city. We need to consider all types of developments that will accommodate a variety of incomes and ages. And we'll have to modify our way of thinking from single-family residence concentration to multifamily or multi-use developments. These are just a few ideas to build on and address the needs of each individual neighborhood together as a community conversation.
Thank you so much. Willie, same question to you. What specific housing policies would you propose to address our housing shortage? 90 seconds.
All right. Well, we've got to use our undeveloped and underdeveloped land more efficiently. We've got to modernize our ordinances. We did do the flooring area recently last week. We got a second vote and passed it. We need to look at the toolkit the planning committee is working on for developers. And but most of all, we're going to get our ordinances up to 2020, not 1970s.
Great. Thank you so much. Speaking of ordinances and changes to housing policy, our next question is going to focus on ADUs. And Willie, we'll start with you. Are you in support of accessory dwelling units? They received a unanimous vote by the planning commission, but they have yet to be supported by council members. But you have 90 seconds to respond.
Well, I don't like it the way it's written now. I think it's got the right place, but I think it should be written as a conditional use where the neighborhoods get input before it gets passed. So I think it should go in front of the board of adjustment, not just a blank check if it's, you know, in that zone it's built. As I think, you know, one size fits all, doesn't work. So I think the neighborhoods and community need input before it gets approved for each case.
All right. Thank you. Whitney, same question to you. ADUs. Are you in support of them? 90 seconds.
So like I said, excuse me, it's no secret that we've got the housing shortage. And I think in order to account for our proposed and expected growth, we really need to start planning now. And we know that we'll continue to protect the USB. So there's only a few options for housing for all of our soon to be neighbors. We have historically been a single-family residence minded community, like I said. And we need to reevaluate the types of developments and housing options that we're building. There's many types of developments we can consider, but I do think that ADUs can be part of this solution. I do think that there should be restrictions in place to maintain neighborhood aesthetics and size requirements. There are a multitude of objections that need to be considered, like parking and short-term rental potential. We'll still need to address ordinances and provide code enforcement support. But I feel if we do it correctly, ADUs can be an asset to our community rather than a nice or like some people think they might be. But most importantly to me, if we can provide options for our aging population to age in place, I'll call it a win all day, every day. As someone who's taken care of ill parents, an ADU would have been a blessing to me as I'm sure it will be for many other families in Lexington.
Great. Thank you so much. Whitney, you'll have the next question. What will you do to build more sustainable waste management systems in Lexington such as curbside compost? You have 90 seconds and then we'll hand it over to you, Willie. Thank you.
So I think first and foremost, we just need to have community conversations and see what the needs of our neighborhoods are. What do they want? What types of recycling options or composting options would they like to see? And then most importantly, what types of options are they willing to pay for? So I think between having our community conversations and educating people on the proper ways to recycle and even composting, I think that we could really make some big changes in the city with respect to how we handle increased waste management options.
Great. Willie, same question to you. What will you do to build more sustainable waste management systems in Lexington? 90 seconds.
Well, first I'd look at the, what we need to do. And ask the professionals, our solid waste division and then the public input. Because, you know, it's a different fund. It's not paid from the general fund. So we see how funds it and see how efficient it is because it's a lot more expensive to dump waste in the landfill. And it is the recycle. In the good old days, it used to be to do the recycling, but since China doesn't take our trash to recycle anymore, then it's killed the recycling business. So we need to look at that composting. Things great because anything we can keep out of the landfill saves money.
Great. Thank you so much. The next question is going to, we'll start with you, Willie, and we'll go to you, Whitney. Do you support defunding the Lexington Police Department?
No. Because what I hear from my people when I've been walking around and talking to is public safety is their first concern. So defunding the police or fire or community corrections, I think is opposite. We need checks and balances. But I think we've got a great police department, a great administration that can take care of it. But, you know, it needs to be reviewed constantly. I think that's where we need to look at is checking and balancing what we have.
All right. Thank you. Whitney, same question. Do you support defunding the Lexington Police Department? 90 seconds.
So I just want to start by saying that I acknowledge and agree that there are major concerns in our city and across the country in regards to social and racial issues. And I know that policing is at the forefront of those conversations. I do agree that changes need to be made to ensure the safety and equal treatment of our entire community. But I do not feel like defunding the police is the right thing to do right now. The city's made a strong commitment to public safety. And if we cut funding without doing appropriate evaluations on how our public safety dollars are spent, then we may end up cutting out technologies or programs that could help our community. One of my goals is to attract and retain the best officers possible. We can only do that if the police and the city are working together for the betterment of our community. I also feel like we need to diversify our police force more. So there's equal representation for our whole community. Let me be clear. I just, just because I don't think that reallocating funds are appropriate right now doesn't mean that I don't want to listen to the concerns of the R communities that are most affected by public safety issues or consider what the needs are for our police officers as well. And I look forward to having these conversations as part of city council.
Thank you. I was just about to put up my 15 second sign. So you beat me to it. So the next question, and this is a lengthy one. The next two are pretty lengthy. So everyone buckle up. So Whitney, you'll have this first question. I will restate the question between the two just because it is quite, quite long. Charitable nonprofit businesses employ 9% of the Lexington Fayette County workforce or about 14,000 residents in Fayette County. And they account for 9.6 of the annual wages, $674 million. In addition to being major employers, the nonprofit sector also brings significant revenues through tourism, local dining and retail support and more. How would you support the nonprofit sector as an employer of choice and as an economic engine in Lexington? So 90 seconds. Go ahead.
All right. So we know that one of our goals as a city is to attract the best and brightest talents to work and live here for supporting and sustaining our nonprofits that are doing good things in our community, then we'll continue to attract individuals who choose to work for those employers that are truly making a difference. More importantly, we need to ensure that our nonprofit employees are making enough to sustain themselves personally. As we work to attract those smart and creative individuals, I feel like our community will flourish with new ideas and new possibilities. And then with those new ideas, we can achieve some type of notoriety even within the nonprofit sector and continue the cycle. The chain effect will only continue to drive our economic development. As a council member, I will partner with these nonprofits to see what assistance they need to promote themselves as employers of choice and provide longevity for their overall business plan, all while working to increase their ability to pay their employees the salaries they'd serve.
Great. You hit it right when I said 30 seconds. Our signs, our sign systems are wild over here. Willie, the same question to you. I'm going to read it again just because it is such a long question. Charitable nonprofit businesses employ 9% of the Lexington Fayette County workforce and account for 9.6% of annual wages in Fayette County. In addition to being major employers, the nonprofit sector also brings revenues through tourism, local dining and retail support. How would you support the nonprofit sector as an employer of choice and as an economic engine in Lexington? 90 seconds.
Well, the nonprofit sector and the public sector have to work together. Because both of us are, money is hard to find. So I would recommend the council, one of the social services committee, to look at what we can do that doesn't cost us anything to help the social services, like in kind. If they need grant writers, we've got grant writers in our staff. They can assist the nonprofit. And we got BCDC, University of Kentucky, that can help us economically draw people for the nonprofits. That's what we got. We got, you know, some great partners in Lexington. We just need to help them, help ourselves and everybody win-win.
All right. Thank you so much. Willie, the next question is for you. It also touches on the nonprofit sector. And I will say that this is our last question in the community submitted questions. And then we'll go on to questions that came from our coalition. All right, Willie, this is for you. At a time of crisis with the COVID-19 pandemic and urgent calls to address racial and social injustice, nonprofits have stepped up in remarkable ways to provide crucial services for the Lexington community. At the same time, nonprofit partnerships with the city were cut from the mayor's proposed budget, though some were later restored by the urban county council. What is your position on the city's future agreements with nonprofits to deliver needed services, enrichment opportunities and more that ensure a safe and thriving community for all Lexington residents? And this is referring to the ESR program inside the city's budget. You have 90 seconds to respond.
Well, as I previously said, we need to work with the nonprofits and secure what they need, ask them and see what we can help them. Because they do do an un, you know, godly amount of work for the city and the community. And they are needed, especially this at times like now. So I would do anything I can. That's why I would hope to, you know, be able to look at their budgets, look at their needs, sit down and talk with them and get down to the nitty-gritty.
Great. Thank you. I am sorry that in the middle of that, this, my timer said that it was setting an alarm for 7:00 AM. I don't know why it did that. But I guess now everyone knows what time I'm waking up tomorrow. Whitney, the same question to you. I will not read the full context. I'm just going to read the last part of the question. What is your position on the city's future agreements and partnerships with nonprofits to deliver needed services, enrichment opportunities and more that ensure a safe, thriving community for all Lexington residents? 90 seconds.
So as a city, we need to continue to support and partner with our nonprofits. There's too many community programs that are needed so that no citizen is left behind. But our city government can't provide all the services, so the nonprofits have to step in and fill that gap. We must place our priorities, I feel, on working with our youth and education supplementation programs, homelessness and food security programs and any and all equity-based programs that we have. In our current environment, these crucial services are needed even more. And we need to work even harder to maintain and encourage all of our partnerships with nonprofits going forward. This is definitely not the time to sever any ties. We need to bend on one another even more than we ever have. So I will make that a priority to maintain those relationships.
Thank you. So now we're going to move on to questions that were written by our LexVote Coalition. So as a reminder, LexVote is a coalition of 13 civic organizations, everything from the League of Women Voters to Civic Lex and Fayette Alliance, who are the two sort of main sponsors, as well as media organizations like the Herald Leader. So these are questions from a broad constituency of organizations. And they really reflect what we consider to be the top priorities and the top issues that are impacting the city of Lexington. So we're going to begin with you, Whitney. The first question is about the city budget. So in recent years, Lexington's budget obligations have outpaced the city's ability to generate revenue. In the fiscal year 20 and 21 budget, this has impacted everything from economic development to social services. What strategies do you recommend to address the revenue shortages that the city has while balancing it with your spending priorities? You have 90 seconds to go.
So I feel like our budget shortfalls can only be addressed if our budget is examined very closely. We need to ensure that our public safety and essential services budgets receive the appropriate amount of funding to ensure our city's safety and that we are living in a place that's operating at a high level. City leaders and residents should consider alternatives to any unnecessary historical budget expenditures that we may have had. It's the city's responsibility to make smart budget decisions with our hard-earned tax dollars, but only after community discussions can happen. We have to ensure that our citizens' needs are being met before we can vote on a budget to serve our community. Our revenue needs scrutiny as well. We're far too dependent on occupational taxes and we must consider new revenue streams such as short-term rental registration fees and taxes. At this point, I feel like no idea is off the table. And I feel like our citizens may actually be the ones to provide great ideas to help our city as a whole.
Thank you so much. Willie, the same question to you. What strategies do you recommend to address revenue shortages while balancing spending priorities? 90 seconds.
Well, first of all, we need to diversify how we get revenues. We rely too heavily on payroll taxes. Even before the COVID, our expenditures were outpacing our revenues. We need to, you know, dedicate funds where they're spent so we can use the money on the general revenues, on the money for public safety and the general services. Like solid waste, you know, pays for itself. Sanitary service pays for itself. We need to ask the state permission to create different revenue streams so we can have dedicated funds instead of relying on occupational things.
Great. Thank you so much. So we're going to move from revenue and budget issues to talking about the urban growth battery. So Lexington's 2018 plan, comprehensive plan, sorry, Imagine Lexington, encourages infill and redevelopment as Lexington's main growth strategy. What specific implementation aspects of the comprehensive plan are working? And what challenges need to be addressed? Willie, we will start with you.
Well, like I said earlier, I think the public, I mean, the planning committee looking at the toolkit, you know, is one thing. City ordinance has been updated 2020. We don't need to expand our boundary because like the 2017 study said we had 17,000 undeveloped, underdeveloped acres in Fayette County. We need to see where those are and how we can use them efficiently without jeopardizing the character of neighborhoods. So I mean, input, so I'd say planning committee could look at something of that nature to see how we can address that. That's what I would recommend.
All right. Thank you so much. Whitney, same question to you. What specific implementation aspects of the comprehensive plan are working? And what challenges need to be addressed?
So I feel like the planning phase and community involvement so far has been impressive. Community conversations like on the table and imagine Nicholasville Road have been invaluable to get feedback from those most affected and most interested by the changes in the proposed plans. More than ever, I feel like the tides are starting to turn on welcoming public feedback and involvement. We all know that we have chose to maintain the urban service boundaries. So infill and redevelopment is our best option to protect our horse farms. However, we're seeing developments, even some in our district, that have begun development and then stalled. So I feel like we just have to hold our developers accountable to build on these precious acres that we have committed to infill and redevelopment and perhaps set more strict guidelines on what is proposed and how it's funded.
All right. Thank you. The next question is going to be about something that's on, I think, all of our minds every day, all the time. And that is COVID-19. The impact of COVID-19 on local businesses will be significant and long-lasting. What will you do as a council member to support their recovery and foster their resilience moving forward? Whitney, we're going to start with you and then Willie, we will go to you.
So I feel like local businesses and nonprofits are the heart of Lexington. And I do agree that the effects of our beloved COVID-19 will be felt for years to come. As council members, I feel like it's our responsibility to step up and offer as much support as we can. And I pledge to work alongside those affected most to develop plans to protect and insulate their future interests in upcoming times of crisis, which I hope we don't see anything like we've experienced here recently. And I do support any type of city donation matching programs if they prove to be fiscally responsible. I just think that doing anything we possibly can to support our local businesses and our nonprofits is, needs to be a priority.
Great. Thank you so much. Willie, the same question to you. What will you do as a council member to support the recovery and foster the resilience of businesses and nonprofits moving forward?
Well, as previously on the council, I brought forth the ordinance to favor local businesses, businesses doing business for the city of Lexington. And I don't see any reason to doubt we can do that again. Because that's what we need to do because this is a very resilient city. And plus the General Services Committee, I would recommend them getting a committee, some committee that started to see how we can implement changes in the government to help our businesses that are impacted by COVID-19. And I would look forward to what they recommend and go.
Thank you so much. We're now going to talk about redistricting. So LFUCG Council will soon have the responsibility of council redistricting for our council districts. What would your approach be to including public participation in that process of redistricting? Willie, we will begin with you. You'll have 90 seconds. And then Whitney, we will move on to you.
I would let the, I would let the city and the county, any citizens know what's going on, how they can input by email, letters, versus transparency is the key. And spread the word through the Fayette County Neighborhood Council, Fayette Alliance, anybody. And get people's input and get it going as soon as possible. Because I remember the last one and it was, you know, hard and difficult to get within the limits. So I'd recommend hearing from more participation from everybody, the better.
Great. Thank you. And Whitney, the same question. What is your approach to including public participation in the redistricting process? 90 seconds.
So I definitely think that public participation is important in all aspects of our city government. And this is no different. I feel like we do have to open up our, we have to let our community know, like Willie said, that this is happening and get their input and their feedback. And I would nominate someone to the redistricting committee that is fair and mindful and would do the best to represent our areas of town well. And really just see what people need and what their feedback is on how to best serve our community.
Great. Thank you. We have another question on public participation. So Lexington has temporarily suspended public comment in all public meetings, which are taking place on Zoom, as you all know. And even today, the city council worked to attempt, make a first attempt at hosting a hybrid meeting where some council members are in chambers and some council members are still remote because of COVID-19. So meaningful public participation, as we just discussed, is vital to a So meaningful public participation, as we just discussed, is vital to a responsive local government. And COVID-19 has created an entirely new set of challenges in that regard, although there were certainly challenges with public participation before. So what strategies would you support to make ongoing public participation accessible for all, even after COVID-19? Whitney, we'll start with you, and then Willie, we'll move on to you. 90 seconds.
So it really is a shame that because of the actions of a few that the voice of those really interested and passionate about our community were silenced. You know, public participation is one of the cornerstones of my campaign, and and I want to encourage conversations and participation with with everybody in our community. I feel like, especially now in the times COVID-19, we need to meet the people where they are even more. Social media and online surveys, virtual neighborhood association meetings, they may become commonplace. And I feel like we can take this opportunity to modernize the tools that we use for public input, and I feel like we can look toward other cities that have allowed public comment successfully for for their direction on how we can go about re-implementing the use of a public comment as, you know, as long as we're operating under these conditions.
Great, thank you. Willie, the same question for you. What strategies would you support to make ongoing public participation accessible for all, even after COVID-19 is over, whenever that is? Willie, you have 90 seconds.
I would get the word out. There's other ways of notifying the council of what you feel, emails, Facebook, phone calls. I remind people, everybody, they have four council members, they got their district council member, and then three at large. You know, so they need to talk to all four of them, or, you know, at least, if not more. The council administrator knows working on a plan. She publicly said that she was going to come back to the council members how to, you know, get public participation back. So I'm looking forward to that.
Great, thank you so much. So this last question is focusing on another topic that's on a lot of our, a lot of our minds, and that's the topic of racial justice. So given your, oh, and I also should say, this is our last question. So we're almost through it. So thank you all so much for bearing with us. It's very strange doing council forums digitally, and I'm sure this is not your all's first and won't be your last. So thank you all so much for being here. So last question, Willie, we'll start with you, and then we'll go to you, Whitney. So given your understanding of Lexington's long and complicated history around racial injustices, what do you plan to do directly to address inequality and its root causes in our city? You have 90 seconds. Go ahead.
My first act will always be to meet and have an open door policy, to talk to anybody and everybody, get their input, and see what they got to say, you know, with respect and courtesy. And and tell everybody, I don't, you know, discriminate against anybody, and it won't be tolerated in this city, no matter what color, race, or anything else. Treat everybody the same, respect and courtesy.
Great. Whitney, same question to you. I'll, I'll repeat it, sorry. That would have been weird weird for me to not do that on the last question. Given your understanding of Lexington's long and complicated history around racial injustices, what do you plan to do directly to address inequality and its root causes in our city? 90 seconds.
So I agree that systemic racism is present in our community, and I'm really proud of the steps that we have taken so far to recognize and correct these injustices. I feel like the Mayor's Commission for Racial Justice and Equality is already making a difference simply because we are taking the time to talk through the issues. However, I also feel like we must ensure that the ideas that come about in the commission are brought to fruition. And that programs are developed, funded and pursued. I'll work with the community to address policies as they relate to education, finance and law enforcement. And I know that we have a rich history that many of us know nothing about because it's always been buried. So we need to uncover the true history of our city from all points of view. We must address the causes and effects of any and all racial injustices as they relate to policing. And I feel like programs should be created to foster trust in our police force. Most importantly, I will continue to demand equality for all, and we'll work and we'll work toward a more inclusive Lexington. Thank you.
Great. Well, I want to thank you all so much again for being here tonight. We'll have to go ahead and stop here because we we made it through all of our questions, which is great. So you all were really great, efficient answerers. So that's really appreciated, I think, just from us and and from the audience as well. So I want to thank you all so much for, again, for being here tonight. And also want to thank our audience for tuning in on both on Facebook and actually just logging into the webinar. That it's it's really great to have such robust engagement from from residents across the city, as I'm sure that you all, you all would agree. So as a reminder, my name is Richard Young. I'm the Executive Director of Civic Lex. We are a founding member of LexVote, which is a coalition that is trying to help folks understand how to participate in in voting this year, both both on the actual how-to-vote press side of it and and also helping them understand where the candidates, like the two of you all, stand. So our next forum is going to be tomorrow at 5:30 PM. The Zoom link is on our website at lex.vote/forums. So it's just lex.vote. There's no dot com, don't worry, just lex.vote/forums. And there you'll be able to sign up and register for our forum tomorrow, which is at 5:30 with James Brown, who is the unopposed incumbent for District One and my council member. So I want to thank you all again for for being here tonight. And I hope you all have a good night and good luck with the campaign. Thank you all so much.
Have a good night.
Bye, have a good night.